Right here. That makes you visible. Especially showing up everywhere. Everybody call this meeting's the order. So the first item we have is a proclamation, Commissioner.
If you get the softball team back up here on the stage. So last week, thirty or two weeks ago now, the Liberty Union High School girls softball team became state champions. And anytime we have a state champion that comes to Fairfield County, it's always good to recognize them. I know we've got a couple in track and hopefully we'll get to come in here in a few weeks. Yeah, you're all gonna have. Just had a chance to talk to Coach Tuckradle and the girls for just a second out in the hallway and mentioned that, you know, winning a state championship is something that will be with them for the rest of their lives. It's a really big deal that I'm sure they don't recognize yet, but down the road, when they're brought back to Liberty to celebrate the 20-year anniversary of their state championship or the 40-year anniversary of their state championship, they're always going to be state champs. So congratulations to all of you. Congratulations, Coach. It is really a big deal and all of Fairfield County is really proud of you. I'll read this proclamation. This is a proclamation recognizing the Liberty Union High School softball team. For as a hard word dedication, sportsmanship, talent, exceptional team chemistry of Liberty Union High School softball team has led these athletes during the Division III state championship. Whereas the accomplishments of Liberty Union High School softball team has brought great honor and pride to Liberty Union Thurston School District and Fairfield County and the coaches, players, parents, faculty, and student body at Liberty Union High School are integral in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. Now therefore, the Fairfield County Order of Commissioners that hereby formally recognize and congratulate Liberty Union Lions High School softball team on their immense achievement. Congratulations, ladies.
Yeah, so I will try to keep it brief. I don't mind talking in front of people, but I do get emotional on occasion. I probably was emotional with this group. But first, we want to say thank you for having us, having us down here and recognizing their great accomplishment this year. It was one of those years where at one point in the season, we were 11-6, just kind of marching along. And we like to tell the story of Lucky Charms. So when we were 11-6, I think at one point, we had lost three out of five games in a row. We were playing bad softball. The ball just was not bouncing our way. And I asked them, I was like, you know what? Can you guys have Lucky Charms at home? Go home and have a bowl of Lucky Charms. Like, it's gotta change our life somehow. And this group, what epitomizes this group is the way, is their belief and they're willing to buy into what we're doing. Not only did some of them go home and grab boxes of Lucky Charms, but all of a sudden, I started getting pictures from players who had gone to the local grocery store and were buying boxes of Lucky Charms, right? And it worked. I think, you know, we ended the season winning 13 straight games. And one of the most proud accomplishments for this group is, you know, there's rankings in the state, right? So you've got the state rankings for softball. We were not ranked in the state. And one of the things we did on this run is we beat the ninth-ranked, seventh-ranked, fifth-ranked, sixth-ranked, and the second-ranked team in the state on our march to a state championship. And that really epitomizes their ability to believe in what we were doing as a coaching staff and to believe in each other. The other good stat I like to tell is in four of the, four of our last five games, we were losing. And we never got down. We never felt like we were out of it. In fact, in the district championship game, we were down four to nothing. We only had one hit through five innings. We'd only played seven innings. And we ended up, we ended up scoring six runs in the top of the sixth to take the lead and win that game. So again, appreciate you guys having us. I agree with you wholeheartedly. They don't know what's going on right now. Heck, I don't know that I really know what's going on right now. But we're basking in every moment of it and enjoying it. We appreciate you guys having us.
I can see both of them. All right. We'll do two. One, two, three. One, two, three. Ladies, I'm prepared to leave. You know, one thing I forgot to mention, there's no team that does really well like this without the support of their parents. As a former baseball, football, basketball, soccer, softball dad, I know how much time the parents put into it. So congratulations to all your parents. Thanks for being here.
So CBS, we have Kara Demme. You look very excited about this. So you were.
Staying up for nights in a row.
So you were chosen as Champion of the Year, is that right?
I was chosen as Champion of the Year for the highest start program.
Well, you know, CPS, you folks there do such a wonderful job in and of itself. And then to be recognized as Champion of the Year, congratulations.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. That was a great honor.
I'm sure you prepared a speech or something.
Absolutely. I'll just re-say the speech that I did when I actually got the award because it was a surprise and like just words fell out. It was absolutely an honor. So Start is Sobriety Treatment and Reducing Trauma. It is a program that actually Governor Dewine implemented back when he was Attorney General. In Fairfield County, we started implementation trainings back in 2017, and we took our first case in 2018. This program is specific for families who are involved with child welfare due to parental substance use. And we work with families in a different way through this program. Our caseworkers are going out on a weekly basis instead of a monthly basis. We're able to refer families to treatment very quickly within days instead of weeks or months. And we also have peer mentors, so individuals with lived experience who have had history with child welfare regarding their own children and are also in recovery from a substance use disorder. So that's the only current we're partnered with the parents in the program to really help lead them to recovery and build support so that they can stay in the recovery.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Cory, I would just add Kara's very modest and will tell you about the program and give accolades for the program itself. But for her to be recognized as the statewide champion of that program, a program that is so highly regarded and has been going on for a little while, and she's been involved from the beginning. So at the state level, they recognized she was the very top of the, top of the hill. And so we're very proud of Kara and the work that she's accomplished with that program.
So Kara, one final time, congratulations. And thank you for everything you do.
Would you like to introduce your intern?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce Olivia Neely. She's our intern through our seat for this year. And Haley is the oversight. They're all ready for everything. So I'm excited to have her here. And she will be in our hands.
So where are you going to school? So what, what grade are you in, so to speak? Okay, all right. Well, listen, thank you for your willingness to join us this year. And maybe you can teach Eric a few things. Well, thank you again.
This is big, this is.
It's all different.
Okay, so we're, we're going to have a presentation on public assistance fraud update. And you know, one of the things here at Fairfield County, we take very seriously is, you know, one of the most needed programs in public assistance, but there are those players who, you know, try to misuse the system. And we're very aware of that. And we keep a very vigilant in this area. So.
May was fraud, public awareness, public assistance fraud awareness fund. We wanted to thank the commissioners for recognizing us last month and giving us the proclamation. I brought Heather Shields, fraud supervisor, with me today. She's going to go over some updates, some stats from last year, and then some new initiatives that we're looking at for this year. I'm going to alert behind her and work the clicker so she doesn't have to do both. So.
Hello, good morning. So yes, I'm Heather Shields, the fraud benefit recovery supervisor. And we just wanted to talk today a little bit about what we did in 2023 and what we're working on this year. So in 2023, Fairfield County had about 7,243 cases that had opened food assistance. We received in our team 684 fraud referrals, and of that, we proved fraud on 45 cases. So as you can see, this is certainly the minority that is committing fraud. It is not the majority of folks that we serve. On the benefit recovery team, we really focus and our main goals are to recover taxpayer dollars that are received when they shouldn't have been received, whether that's through intentional acts or through errors on our part or the customer's part. We also want to ensure that only people eligible for assistance are the ones receiving it. Program integrity is really important. If we don't uphold the integrity, then the programs can't exist. So that's really what drives us.
Ask a question. How are you today?
I'm good. How are you?
That was my question. Can we back up a slide?
Sure.
So I just want to ask a little bit about that road from 684 to 45. Is that, or does characterize those referrals? I mean, are some by misunderstandings, corrective action needed with the benefit recipient? They were just doing something, you know, a little off, and we got that fixed, so we didn't have to refer a big criminal. You know, I mean, what, can you, can you just give us a little window on that path, Rob's saying 684 to 45?
Absolutely. And you nailed it. That's exactly it. Sometimes we get a referral from a neighbor who's mad and tells us a bunch of stuff, but it has nothing to do with the benefits they're receiving. Other times, it could simply be an error on the case that the customer made, but there's no level of intentional there. We look at it. It just happened two months ago. The next time we spoke with them, they told us about it. So yes, there's an overpayment. Yes, we're required to collect it. They just didn't do it intentionally. And then those 45 that did, those are the extreme level of cases where it was very obvious that it was done intentionally, whether that's creating documents, providing multiple occasions where miscreants were provided or withheld from us. So it really does windle down pretty quickly when you look at it like that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so what is public assistance? At John and Family and our department, we offer communities to our food assistance or SNAP, Medicaid, childcare, cash assistance, or emergency cash assistance, which is the PRC. All of these programs, when we establish an overpayment and then collect those funds back, they offer a variety of incentives. Incentives are the dollar amount that the county maintains or gets to keep out of collecting those dollars. So for food assistance, if the actual, the overpayment was caused just due to an error, then we maintain 20% of the dollar collected. If it was due to fraudulent activity where something done on purpose, then that's 35% for food assistance. Child Care offers nothing. We keep nothing in return for child care collections. Cash assistance is 20%, and then Medicaid is 20%. So in 2023, Fairfield County John and Family received 138,146. So the incentives are caused by our collections. And this graph shows that as it's weighted by our caseload, Fairfield County received first place in the state on collections. We collected just in food assistance, 464,000, just over 464,000. Altogether, it was over 481. As you can see, food assistance is the most referred upon and the most investigated. Those dollars are significantly higher than the other.
Ask another question shortly. Sorry, I don't understand. When you say collections and attribute $464,000 as a SNAP, I'm, maybe I wasn't listening closely enough, but I'm not understanding what you collected for.
Yes. So any customer who receives an overpayment on food assistance SNAP benefits, so a customer received benefits for six months that they weren't eligible, they are then required to repay those, whether they did it on purpose, whether the agency failed to act and caused the overpayment, or if the customer did it fraudulently. Either way, the money is now due back. So we establish an overpayment and we begin collections. We always make an effort to do that voluntarily. In fact, the majority of our funds are voluntarily set up through a voluntary arrangement. However, if it falls delinquent and the individual isn't repaying, then they are subject to different, a variety of involuntary methods such as tax offset or garnishment of the federal wage that they receive.
That's an extraordinary chart. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So we definitely could not do this without the partnership with the Fairfield County Prosecuting Office. We have got a great relationship with the current staff, and the attorneys down there will sit with me and dig through a case after we built it and gathered all of our subpoenas. They believe wholeheartedly that public assistance fraud must be acted upon to deter future occurrences. So I cannot thank them enough, as well as the Fairfield County Court of Common Pies, our judges, both Judge Behrens and Judge Trimmer. You know, they see these cases come in and they treat them very seriously as they would have another case. And so I can't, I can't stress enough how much that, those two relationships have really allowed us to be successful in holding them. Our judges with the prosecution involved have now made it a condition of their sentencing to pay back restitution. So in 2023, we did successfully prosecute eight cases, which were over $155,000 of stolen benefits. Eleven cases have, or so far, they've been indicted, but we're just working through the legal process. And 10 more are ready to be entered and two for indictment. And we're just trying to catch up on those 11 we're waiting on now. So it is because of their involvement. There's a lot of counties in our state that don't have that relationship with the prosecutor's office, and they just simply, it's much, it's more difficult to gain that restitution back if you're not holding these folks accountable. I thought it would be good to review over just one of our cases that we successfully prosecuted in 2023. This was a married couple who'd been receiving food assistance between April of 20 and July of 22. We received our referral because the caseworker was processing some documents and found it questionable that the couple was again reporting to have no income, but was still maintaining their same residence and reporting having a mortgage. So the caseworker wanted us to take a second look into the case. We opened an investigation and began issuing subpoenas and gathering our requests. And we discovered that the couple actually owned several businesses, lots of property. In fact, the home that they were living in while receiving assistance had recently been purchased for over $500,000. The taxes revealed that the individuals were earning over $90,000 a year after business expenses. So, and this occurred over the course of those three applications we had in Charming Court. We did make a referral to the prosecutor's office. They accepted the case. And through the legal course, a plea agreement was reached and both parties pled guilty to an Act Four, which was tampering with records. They were both disqualified from receiving assistance for a period of five years. They are both serving five years of community control, and they were ordered to pay back all of the benefits that they received as a term of their sentencing. And in fact, when we went to the sentencing hearing, they came in with a money order for full restitution. So we were able to recover that in days.
Ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
So I understand it's not a violent crime, but does your team have input into the sentencing, so to speak, and are you comfortable with that? And just from a distance, 30,000 feet, home in jail for a while, I mean, I don't know. What, what should I comment?
I agree with you. It's not violent crime, and I understand that. My main focus is recovering taxpayers' dollars. So throwing an individual in jail, it's going to be hard to collect our money. Now, in this case, they did come into the hearing with full restitution. They are, their life is forever altered. They have a felony on their record. These folks are professional folks with professional licensing and good-paying jobs. So this is affecting them, in my opinion, pretty significantly to walk away with a felony on their record.
Concentration on recovering the taxpayer dollars. I need your suggestion of throwing them to jail costs taxpayers. I follow you.
All right. So our new initiative, and it really started in the middle of 2023, and it's ever-evolving. It's still going. In late 22, I'm going to say we, but it wasn't me, it was much higher, federal, state folks were seeing a trend where individuals, our customers, were reporting that their benefits were being taken right off their card. So our customer had their food assistance card in their hand. They're calling to check the balance on the day that their card loaded, and the benefits were gone. And what the state and federal level have discovered is it was all done electronically. Folks are cloning and skimming people's EBT cards. They're food assistance card. So our most vulnerable population fell victim to this electronic theft, and it was happening across the nation and frequently. So in December 29th of 2022, the consolidated appropriation that Act 23 was signed into law. This allowed us as a county, as a state and county, to reimburse the folks who were victims of this electronic theft. And on May 11th of 23, the state's plan was approved, which allowed the county to then come up with a process, come up with who was going to handle this, how we were going to do it. And we started accepting applications. And in 2023, we processed 57 applications and were able to replace over $22,000 to our customers who were victims of stolen benefits. And of course, we're working really hard on educating the public. Well, this wasn't their fault. There are safety precautions we can take, such as changing our PIN frequently, definitely changing the PIN after making an online purchase for grocery pickup, such as Walmart or other organizations. So we've been working really hard on educating the public on that as well. That is our hotline, 652-7616. If you come across anything that you think needs looked into, we really rely on our public to make those referrals.
So Heather and Krista, you know, put great work, right? Number one, we just had the state champion here in softball. It's, like Fairfield County, you know, it's bound to fall. So, you know, the question, these SNAP cards, do they have a chip or are these free?
They do not. They are not shipped.
That's one way they can eliminate that insult, as you recommend to the votes. So you need to put a chip in there, right?
Absolutely. Yes. Although there's some talk that that may not prevent it due to, I believe, the cash assistance recently moved to a chip card, and then they fell victim. So I don't know if it would solve all the issues, but I think it's going to solve the majority of them.
Well, good. Congratulations. We really appreciate you guys a lot.
Thank you. Thank you.
So now we have an executive session to discuss security matters. Measure Dables. Motion to go into executive session, discuss security issues. That session is like the cabinet commissioners, county administrator, deputy county administrator, representatives from sheriff's office, prosecutor's office, 19.
And Martin.
Martin. What about John? Second. Sure. Full call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yep.
Mr. Ben?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes. It shouldn't be long, so shall we burn? And we're going to have a update on personnel policy manual.
We'll have to fast forward that to next week. Jeff was not doing well today.
So we're now public comment. If you wish to make public comment, please approach the podium. and give your name and address, and there is a three minute limit.
Terry Pymer, 3464 South Lane Road, Walnut Township, Champaign, Florida. So I've decided that these big solar projects are bad for my health. I'm waking up at 2:00. Anyway, so I woke up, couldn't get back to sleep. So I got onto PJM site and OPSB just out of curiosity. There are five project numbers on PJM site, two of which are Eastern Cotton Tail, one of which the solar company EDF has said that that's the one that they're doing for 220 megawatts. And I didn't get a chance to talk to Steve. You were going to check on the other 114 megawatt, because PJM considers that a separate project. So we don't know where it is or what's happening with that. And then there's another three that do not say Eastern Cotton Tail, but it's the, all of these are going through Wes Millersport, the same location. The AG1 163, 100 megawatts, AG2 003, 20 megawatts, H1 032, another 18 megawatts, and they're all solar. So I'm trying to find out what those are. Also, I was curious, when I got to thinking about manufacturers that stay open 24 hours a day and what they run on in the middle of night. So I got on the PJM site, and at 3:00 this morning, there was 81,678 megawatts being generated at 3:00 this morning. And that is all 13 states and Washington DC in the PJM system, and that's all fuel types. Okay, solar was 46 megawatts, and that was obviously from battery storage. So what's going to happen when you have all renewables, unless our government gets smart, and you don't have any renewables to power all of the manufacturers and stores and anything and everything? So it just gave me kind of additional thought there of what's going to happen. Gas, nuclear, and coal, actually, gas was 34,173 megawatts, nuclear was 32,967 megawatts, and coal was the lowest one in that group of 11,506 megawatts. So those three were actually through dispatchable power. So our renewables are not dispatchable power. I've talked to Ohio Power Siding Board again, and been in also communication with PJM. And according to Ohio Revised Code, you as commissioners have the authority to actually write a resolution to a, to actually oppose a specific project of Eastern Cotton Tail. You can do that. Also, you are allowed to pass a resolution to become intervenors. Now, I understand that.
Please conclude.
I'm only, and I understand Commissioner Davis would probably abstain on both of the, well, had, would have to abstain on one of them. So I'm hoping that you will at least pass a resolution to oppose the actual project because it does make a difference with OPSB. Thank you.
Thank you. You'd like to be next, please. Well, thank you all for coming. Anything unlabelled?
I briefly, Commissioner, just wanted to point out there is a resolution to transfer some land that commissioners hold near the fairgrounds to the county land bank. I believe Director Kepner's here, if you have any questions about that, but otherwise, everything should be sufficient. It's very much like the transfer the commissioners did previously in the Lawrence Miller Building to the land bank back in the 2010s.
On me?
Just echoing, thank you to Stephen on that and Michael for working through that process. Took us just a little bit to figure that out, and I also appreciate their work and their patience. And I think Belinda as well. All right. We did receive word yesterday that the Senate introduced Senate Bill 288, which is allocating the full 700 million from the One Time Strategic Community Investment Fund that was created in the state operating budget. And I know that Commissioner Levesey has had conversations with both Representative LaRae and Senator Schaefer on this topic with projects that where Fairfield County seems to be very likely to receiving funding. So Commissioner Levesey, I don't know if you want to touch on that?
Well, you know, quite frankly, I want to show my appreciation to Representative Jeff LaRae and Senator Schaefer, as well as Representative Kevin Miller, supporting any of the projects. There are a few projects that did not get funded, but we'll continue to work on those, maybe through the capital budget. So I sure don't think anything you'd like to add to that.
I'm ready to cut the cake after the vote is.
Sure.
Yeah, I did have a really positive conversation with Senator Dolan last week prior to introduction of this, I mean, 288 or whatever this number is. And even prior to that introduction of that, Bill, his confidence in projects that Fairfield County, he was very high. And so I intend that it remain in communication with Senator Dolan until this matters.
One additional item that is actually outside of Fairfield County, but Representative LaRae and Senator Schaefer worked on is a new pier on Buckeye Lake, which there's a funding for about $11 million, which is a very big number. And so we show our appreciation for those gentlemen, as well as Representative Kevin Miller, bringing that project forward, because anything, although it's outside of Fairfield County on the portion of the lake, there's three counties that are represented there, anything that happens on the lake affects all, everybody. So it's a, it's a very, very good project.
All right. And specifically for us, the purchase of the Colonnade Building still is on that list. And so remaining hopeful that that we will be able to conclude the purchase of that property with that funding. Highlights of resolutions, the review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, and there are 32 resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting today. A few of note, we do have the resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax outside the 10 mil limitation and stating intent to place the renewal levy of an existing mental health and services levy on the November 5th general election ballot. So this is the second resolution you passed for that for Adam H. And we have Marcy here today. Marcy, if you want to add anything on that?
I'm just thanking, we are required by law, we come back on the ballot every 10 years. We're not asking for any kind of increase, but this renewal will allow us to continue all the important projects that we started for the county.
Thank you, Marcy, and thank you to folks in Officer's Office and Rochelle and Amy at the prosecutor's office. And I'm sure Austin and Stephen had a hand in it as well, but getting us to this point. And then Rochelle will be hand delivering the resolution to the Board of Elections for them to begin their process. And she'll get you guys a copy as well. Yep. We also have a resolution that we talked about transferring the property that the county owns at the fairgrounds to the land bank. So we touched on that one. And then we also have a resolution authorizing ARP funds to Fairfield Hospice, which was negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. So we've been working on that one for a while now, just able to get that across the finish line. Also have a resolution appointing Anthony Ickini and Vince Carpeco and Vince Utterback to the Fairfield 33 Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council. Rick, anything to add?
This is just part of the whole Ozal Western Road development that we have up there. Ozal Council for that CRA, this is the first time we've done that. So we're going through all of our track lists and getting everything squared.
We also have a couple of resolutions where we're appropriating from unappropriated to deal with some additional expenses related to the airport hangar project, and then also a very small one related to cybersecurity for IT. We also have a resolution for a change order for the elevator at the Fairfield Center. And JFS has 14 resolutions for network contracts and amendments to previous network contracts. Anything on that, Rick?
Thank you. I have stat.
It added to the 31 total significantly. And then regional planning has a resolution to approve a development agreement for Phase 1A of the Sycamore Grove subdivision. Holly, anything?
That's just side of standards balancing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Bart, budget review?
No, thanks.
All right. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Thank you. Under calendar and invitations, the elder abuse awareness breakfast is tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM at the Life Church Vineyard in Pleasantville. Habitat for Humanity is having a celebration for the completion of a home on June 27th at 10:00 AM at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Sir, go to Mount Pleasant Elementary School to take a transit shuttle to the home located at 325 East 6th Avenue. The Hill Road North Kroger Piggerton is having a grand reopening ribbon cutting ceremony on June 26th at 10:00 AM. The commissioners received the following correspondence and articles. A type 2 expedited annexation by plus or minus acres from Pleasant Township to City of Lancaster. David Hodges, the agent for the petitioner. The 2023 annual report from the engineer's office, correspondence regarding industrial solar projects, a thank you email regarding industrial solar exclusionary zones, a press release from Visit Fairfield County titled Bottoms Up, a mid-century barware show by Gay Fat Studios, a glass town identity is reignited. A June 5th Lancaster Eagle Gazette title, Commissioner Wants More Data on Workforce Center Success, a memo from Dr. Brown County Auditor regarding operating indicators for legislative and executive functions from 2018 to 2023, the auditor's wins of the week, the Fairfield County Municipal Court Criminal Traffic Fees Report, and a thank you card for Commissioner Fix from Lutheran Social Services. That is it.
Thank you, Rochelle. That's all, Commissioner.
This is, when I might have, with the last Thursday, I believe, we had career signing day at Workforce Center. And what a great event. I think Fisher Thanks mentioned that the first time we did that, there was four. How many more there?
130 and 11. Great event, and it was just, so Bobby Carpenter, who runs partners in an HVAC company in Columbus, former Ohio State football player, radio personality, now of Columbus, who was there, gave a great speech presentation. They hired nine of our students. And on the radio show the next day, he made reference and said he was privileged to be at this event. He even explained where the workforce center was, Cora Coombat 33. So it was, it was nice to get a little bit of pressure on him.
It was pretty interesting the way he used the illustration of a dash, a dash being the time you were until the time you no longer with us. I couldn't say dead, but that dash is what's in between. And, you know, there's a major portion of that, well, well illustrated. Fisher, thanks.
Last week, I had an opportunity to step out of the workforce center for that signing ceremony. It was kind of cool to see from wherever we started, down to the zebra with four kids, just a room full of people and a lot of folks signing up to get to work. And some folks that couldn't make it that day because they already worked. I think it's kind of really a cool day. Did have an opportunity last week to, to meet with a number of our elected officials and directors and just, it's always refreshing to, to get someone on one time and to be reminded of what a great team we have here and how fortunate we are to, you know, up and down the line. I've got great leaders all the way through. So we appreciate how this was fantastic.
Fisher Davis, just a couple things. One, I did have an opportunity to follow up on what I'll call the 114 questions. Had I spoken to that last week, I, I think I would have misspoken. I was clearly under the impression from prior conversations that they were not proceeding with 114. And I didn't want to say that last week because I, that information was somewhat dated. I'm glad I didn't say that because I think a more appropriate way to think about the 114 is they're not proceeding on that right now. But I can't give anybody any confidence as to whether they may at some point in the future revisit that question on the 114. I, I consider it dormant. I consider it uphill for them to come back on that later. But I don't want to, I don't want to get pinned down to making a claim that it's dead, only to find out later that it's not. So.
It's in the system. That's expedited. Just like.
Understand. So that's what I know on that. And, you know, it, it certainly would have to have its own process, so to speak, if they were to make an effort on that. But in any event, I wish I could give people more comfort on that. But I think that's a, a potential player to be named later. Is the way I'd say it right now. The other thing I wanted to touch on is I did have an opportunity to speak with Senator Dolan and representative of South Central Power regarding Senate Bill 275. Again, see what happens to that, but it's something to keep an eye on. This is the bill that Senator Dolan is proposing to transform Ohio's energy delivery model from what's called a transmission system to a distributive system. And it's really complicated. There are parts of it that aren't complicated, like no how, no way can you put any kind of energy production on farmland forever, period. That's not complicated. Net metering is not complicated. But the transition from transmission to a distributive system, I think it's complicated. And I'm not 100% clear on all the technical details of that. So I'm continuing to try to understand that. That's thanks. Thank you, Mr. President. So tomorrow, we have elder abuse awareness breakfast at church, at Ben Church on.
Life Church.
Life.
Life Church Vineyard.
And what a, what a great event. And more importantly, it's the awareness of elder abuse does occur in a person in various forms, sometimes financially, being taken advantage of financially. Our active service people with JFS do a fantastic job in that area. Are you anything to add to that?
I just thank you for your remarks, and we're very much looking forward to that breakfast tomorrow. As you say, it's a, it's an area where a lot of people aren't aware that that kind of exploitation goes on. And so this event gave us the opportunity to bring that to the forefront a little bit. So we hope to see a lot of people there tomorrow.
Fisher Davis, thank you. So Jim?
Folks should see tax bills in their mailboxes here next week. I know I'm excited about that. And those that are on escrow, either through the mortgage company or through our office, obviously, classing the tax bill. That's all.
So Michael, Director for Land Bank, so, you know, obviously, it's on to transfer the property from the county to the land bank. It's located contiguous with the fairgrounds. Anything you'd like to talk about?
I just, I just want to, one of the benefits to the county of having a land bank is the ability to pass a property that has some special circumstances to the land bank. It gives it a little more flexibility in how we deal with that property. As I mentioned, the only other time we've done it, we do it sparingly, is Lawrence Miller Building. It's not something that we take lightly, something that, special circumstances, we think, under this particular case, given its location. So we're looking forward to working with the Fair, Fair Board, Land Bank. So we're looking forward to working with the Fair Board, Land Bank, and property group.
Mr. President. I did reach out to Cheryl Ritz with the Ag Society to connect her and Michael, and I believe they're setting up a time to meet with the rest of their leadership of that board regarding this.
Yeah, Jim, I mean, what their expectations might be moving forward. But other than us taking control of the property right now, we don't have any plans initially for what we'll do with it at the end.
And I'll continue this conversation within the land bank. But at every opportunity, I will continue to reiterate that I have a strong preference for whatever that final use is, for it to be consistent with, complementary with what the agricultural society is doing with the Fairgrounds. I just, I wouldn't want this righteous effort to be, I don't, later controversy between us and the agricultural society. So I'm very, very strongly supportive of a final use that is looked favorably on by the agricultural society. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, brother.
Hello. The Level 2 budget for 2025, revenues are all completed there. The only change I would suspect is maybe after the Investment Advisory Council meets mid-year, that we will have an adjustment to increase that particular revenue line. Right now, it's relatively flat as compared to 2024. So as you know, we have waived the tax budget for efficiency purposes. This is a little bit earlier than you might have this information. It's in there now. And we are in the middle of the single audit now. They've moved into the single audit, the state auditors have. So folks are going to get a few questions, but that won't last very long. There's just a few other things that they have to finalize the federal reviews. I do want to say thank you to Ani and John. I think both took a picture of the Record Center mural, the Foster the Future mural. I'm not sure who took the picture.
Donna Stalter, kind of did her part.
Okay. So thanks to Donna Stalter, because I really had that task staff, like we need some more colorful pictures all throughout the financial report and the popular financial report. And that one is truly very colorful, and it's very nice. It tells a good story. So I really like having those pictures. And to that end, if anybody has any other pictures that they'd want to send on so that we could put them in the other reports that we have, we'll accept them. We're starting to gather them ourselves. But if you have others that you like quite a lot, we would really like to showcase some of those good projects, especially if they're very colorful and show the different seasons in Ohio, too. The number of checks issued annually are now surpassing 30,000. Just two years ago, it was around 25,000. So it's a workload that's increasing, and we're looking at being able to do more of those electronically. So you'll see or hear more about that in the future as we think about different modules that we could use to improve the technology there. The next video you're going to see is with weights and measures. The last one we saw was with weights and measures, and it was about the card skimming. This next one will be how they test scales, both scales at the Fairgrounds as well as other areas. Right now, in Sheets, they're doing a lot of preparation to make sure that we can open up and like stir the way that they opened up in Pickerington, and it's a very exciting opening. Prepare to amend the East for the owner occupancy credit. Interestingly, at the tour this week, his Heritage District Tour, there were several people who had questions about the owner occupancy credit. So in my home office, I kind of set up a little office, was answering questions about the owner occupancy credit, which inspired me to do a little bit more information about that as outreach. That's a credit that goes to the property owners on property taxes on your principal residence, going to have it on one, but it doesn't happen automatically. So you have to apply for it. You have to note it in your conveyance of your properties. There's a place you could look for it. And there were several people who didn't have that on their records, and they were able to update that very quickly. Another question that keeps coming up is relating to how Franklin County is in the middle of a revow year. Fairfield County is not. You know, ours is not until '25. And because there's so much interest and conversation about what's happening in Franklin County, a lot of people think that it's happening in Fairfield County as well. And our revow isn't until '25, although we are working on it now. All the new construction in Pickerington, for example, has already been accounted for for this year. For June 10th, Destination Downtown in the Chamber, we're having a celebration on June 10th at the Veterans Square. I don't know if any of you have tables that you're expected to put up there, but we will have one in the County Daughter's Office. So if you'd like to give us educational outreach materials, we'll place it there and take care of that for you. And I don't know who to say thank you to for the little library. But I think, John, your folks moved that from the Amstutz to our area.
A gentleman who's no longer with us.
Okay. Well, I'm thankful for that because a lot of people have commented how nice it is to have that in a safe space to walk through there. And if any of you have books that you'd like to place there, we keep it neat, make sure that there are appropriate books in there as well. And then thank you, I think, to HR for the first aid stations that have been placed in various buildings. That was something during our Monday morning meeting, staff wanted to make sure I said thank you about because we have not had a well-stocked first aid center before at 108, and they're very appreciative of it.
And then Centas will do the restocking, so it's not on the ability staff or HR team. They will regularly make sure. And we only get charged for what they're replacing.
And they were very happy to see that, so I wanted to share that. It may seem like a little thing, but it was noticed, so thank you for that.
Tony. Only thing I have is next week, we will have a resolution for the Board to consider a pilot program or financial assistance for homes and exemptions. That'll be next week's.
Good, just a 10% reduction.
If next week when we do that resolution, we'll talk about it again.
And we've been working with Crowd Communications to come up with some communication materials to promote this and locations. And then Mr. Fex is going to make that the highlight of his Commission Connection video at the end of the month with Tony.
Rick. Well, you have to have something.
Well, you know, just one thing on top of my head, which in partnership with Ohio University, it belongs to the best growing region in the Midwest. And to say Ohio U is typically forgotten by the region as Ohio State and Columbus State dominates everything. But we're, as President of Mode, we're going to have a retreat down in the Hocking Hills. And Ohio University's President is trying to get there to present to the whole group. So this is really cool how with all the stuff we're doing, I think we're going to be able to help connect that with the Columbus region, help build bigger partnerships, which, guess what, we're right in the middle of that mix. So we're in that connection between Athens and Columbus, so.
I knew you had something.
But ultimately, get to highlight EMA things, but this Friday, we again will be hosting and teaching the new Director's Academy for new EMA Directors in St. Ohio. So we do that annually at Fairfield Center since we've had that location. Bring in 20 or 30 new EMA Directors, that much turnover, and try to give them as much practical instruction as we can from director to director.
Are you doing the training?
I do, I do the grants portion, yes, sir.
And? I think you might be, thanks. Great. I will say of the many reservations that we have today, that is, they are private contracts for children, six of children in our custody, because there are so many, is because they coincide with the same fiscal year. So you will likely see another batch of those next week as well. And we need a lot of different providers because unfortunately, there's very high demand for these providers. They are mostly full or near full at any given time. So we typically have to call a number of different locations before we find one, um, where we can place a child, so.
I forgot to mention that we are also appointing some board members to Adam H. First appointment for Dr. Sanel Bach, and then we have some reappointments with Laura Coholic, Tamikaala, and Ryan Holstein. Sorry, Marcy, I skipped right over that in my report.
So please rise if you're ready. I believe in the United States, America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. Shall any announcements?
There are no announcements.
So the approval minutes for June 4th, 2024.
Send it.
Discussion. Call please.
Mr. Fex.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Minutes past 3:0. From the Commissioners, Resolution 2024-6.11.A, the resolution authorizing the approval of a proclamation.
Under Commissioners, I move items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, and M. Second.
Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Mr. Fex.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution 2024-6.11.N, the resolution for change order number one to the contract with Mosley Elevator and the Fairfield County Commissioners.
Send it. Second.
Discussion.
Some changes to the lights that were not in the base did for that, just to match the existing aesthetic building.
But that elevator is in good shape, though.
This is to tack on to a complete renovation of the elevator building, too.
I understand.
Mr. President, if I might, please.
I may have just not noticed it before, but in the elevator today, I thought I noticed some new signage suggesting that the fourth floor is limited to, I don't know.
All right.
Yes, that word.
It is fun to do this in the courthouse to kind of identify certain areas that we generally cannot allow the public to enter based on whether we're storing personnel records or things like that, just to maintain the.
Is that a new sign of the elevator, or did I just, did I just notice?
It is temporary.
That's what I was worried about, the aesthetics. Additional discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Fex.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2024-6.11.O, a resolution regarding amendment for previously approved network placement and related services agreement between Journey Home Foster Care and Child Protective Services.
For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z, A, B, C, C, and D, D.
Second. Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Mr. Fex.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2024-6.11.E, a resolution to approve a development agreement for Sycamore Grove Phase 1A subdivision.
Send it.
Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Mr. Fex.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. Payment of bills, Resolution 2024-6.11.fm, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Send it.
Discussion. Seeing done, roll call please.
Mr. Fex.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. The next regular meeting is scheduled for June 18th at 9:00.
Any additional items come before the Board of Commissioners at this time?
Just a reminder that this afternoon, there is the Transportation Improvement District meeting at 1:00, and then all three Commissioners have been invited to attend the NSYJ Ohio Educational Presentation on Economic Bill and Best Practices, and that's at the second floor of City Hall.
What time is that second?
2:30. Did previously RSVP all three of you?
You go.
Got it.
Looking for more.
Question to adjourn. Second.
On favor, signature, saying I'm clear.